Good evening. I'd like to call to order the November 20th meeting of the Media Borough Council. I'd ask everyone, please, to stand and pledge the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get to the formal business of the meeting, I do need to let everyone know that we will have a brief executive session following the adjournment of this meeting to discuss legal issues, I believe.
Yes, sure. Follow-up from last month's?
Yes, yeah, sorry. Follow-up, yeah, thank you. We have two orders of minutes, two sets of minutes to approve. First item is the October 9th workshop meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the October 9th workshop meeting minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Next up are the minutes of the October 16th council meeting. Do I have a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the October 16th, 2025 council meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. We now have the first of two opportunities for public comment and privilege of the floor. If anyone would like to make a comment, there are two ways to get in touch with us. You can send an email to comments@mediaborough.com. And otherwise, you're welcome to come and speak here. We just need to know your name and address, and then you'll have an opportunity to have the floor. Ms. Rapinoe, do we have any emails this evening?
We do not.
Thank you. Is there anyone present who would care to speak tonight? Okay. Seeing there are no takers, we will move on now to the Borough Manager's Report. Ms. Forman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening to everyone. I just had one brief acknowledgement, and that was related to the food drive. I wanted to thank all the residents, employees who dropped off food in our lobby for the Delaware County's food drive, the countywide food drive. I heard they had over 600 cars, and they were able to fill over eight food banks throughout the county, like completely fill them up. So it was a really successful collaboration for everybody in towns in need, so I just wanted to thank them.
Thank you. That's wonderful. Any questions for the manager? Hearing none. We'll move on now to our Solicitors' Report. We'll change the order a little bit for the surprise executive session.
Talk really slowly once again. I don't have anything tonight, thank you.
Thank you. And before we get to our Engineers' Report, I'd just like to take a moment to congratulate all those who participated in one way or another in our last elections earlier this month. Congratulations to those who were victorious, and congratulations to those who were not victorious for exercising their right to be part of our system. I do encourage everyone, whether or not you were successful in this election in Media Borough, to participate in the future. We will have some openings. We will let you know about those, and I encourage anyone in the borough to join us in the wonderful business of running this great, great town. Are you ready? Okay, yes. We'll go on now to our Engineers' Report. Mr. Mattson.
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple updates on some capital projects. We're delighted that groundbreaking occurred at Plum Street for the installation of the shade structure. The contractor has completed the excavation, and it is a, you know, a large undertaking to excavate the foundation materials. So all that work has been completed. Tomorrow, concrete should be poured for the entire foundation, which is great news. The contractor is aware that this work is to be completed before Thanksgiving, so he would like to work on Saturday to do the final wrap-up. So by Monday, this thing should be up and the site restored, which is just great news. We did have a field meeting with the contractor and the electrical contractor for the rapid rectangular flashing beacons over at Providence Road and Fifth Street to that installation. There were a couple concepts that they exchanged with me that I think will be improvements to that plan, so we're moving forward with that application. And then, the paperwork for the two projects, one at Lemon and Jefferson, which is a CDPG project, and the installation of the 11 ADA ramps is being reviewed by the county. So once we have all that paperwork resolved, we will have a pre-construction meeting and then move forward with those. The contractor is eager, which is great news. So I've been in touch with the awarded bidder, Chip Bolone. Again, they're showing us they can get all this work done by the end of the year.
Wonderful.
That's great news.
Thank you.
Unless there's any other question. I did, oh, I want to report, I had a meeting with, or I attended a meeting with the county. The county is undergoing its Act 167 Plan. The Act 167 Plan is stormwater management planning, stormwater management planning. So they're undertaking a large watershed study of all the seven major watercourses or creeks here in Delaware County. So they'll be implementing a number of recommendations to help improve both stormwater runoff and water quality. So it should be interesting to see how that plan develops, but I did attend that. So unless there's any other questions, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for the engineer?
I do have a question. Mr. Mattson, what's the timeline, again, for the Providence Road traffic calming at that application?
So we, so there are two, there are two concurrent projects that are running. We have our project, and then PICO is doing some work.
Okay.
So what we've done is we petitioned PennDOT to do the work that's outside the cartway, which would be the installation of the pedestals and the associated improvements to the ADA ramps, but the crosswalk wouldn't be installed until PICO has completed their work. So the contractor says the only lead time item that is a little bit behind are the actual, the actual beacons themselves. The pedestals are available, so those can be installed, and there was a lead time, I think it was eight weeks for the beacons.
Okay.
So it puts us, probably puts us somewhere, I would like to get it done by the end of the year. We're coordinating with PICO and with PennDOT, but we're trying to get that done, so.
Okay. All right. Well, thanks for all your coordination.
Mm-hmm. So.
Thank you. Any more questions? Seeing none, we'll move on now to the Mayor's Report. Mr. Mayor.
Good evening. The complaint log last month, there were 709 complaints. I'll just read a couple of them. Assaults, two. Domestic, 14. We had harassments, four, and a couple more in this page. Motor violations, 24. Motor vehicles, what, 117. Public drunkness, I sound like that, don't I? Five. Suspicious person, 13. Traffic accident, 30. That's pretty high. Traffic detail, 34. Tough one.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to clarify, that 117, I think, was vehicle, motor vehicle warnings.
A warning.
Yes, and they stopped.
Yeah, that, yeah.
Yep, so it wasn't 141 accidents. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Any questions for the mayor? Okay. Hearing none. We'll move on to our council and committee reports. We will start with transportation. Councilmember Trey Herman. Mr. Herman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no liaison announcements, and so I'll move on to the traffic education topic of the month. This month's topic is around double parking and delivery vehicles. Around media, double parking and improperly stopped vehicles creates significant hazards on our streets, even when the stoppage lasts only a moment. These vehicles block travel lanes, force sudden merges, and disrupt the predictable flow of traffic. In busy areas such as State Street, a single double parked car can trigger backups that frustrate drivers and increase the risk of rear-end collisions and side swipes. The most dangerous, the most serious danger in the, is the reduction of visibility. When vehicles obstruct lanes, drivers are forced to navigate around blind spots that may hide oncoming traffic, cyclists, or pedestrians. Children crossing the street are especially vulnerable, as they may not realize how non-visible they become when stepping into the roadway between large vehicles. Double parking and deliveries caused by Amazon, FedEx, UPS delivery trucks, and SEPTA vehicles also endanger pedestrians who must navigate around them, often stepping into lanes, into active lanes to pass. These risks can be avoided when drivers, businesses, and delivery vehicles commit to their safer practices. Using designated loading zones, scheduling deliveries during less congested times, and choosing legal parking options, even when it requires an extra minute, helps keep sightlines clear and traffic flowing safely. Please be careful, take your time, and keep our streets safe.
All right.
All right, and moving on. Item number three is the adoption of ordinance number 1175 of 2025, residential parking program, which I submit in the form of a motion.
Thank you. Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Just to provide a little clarity on the motion. So this particular ordinance has a few minor changes, the biggest ones of which are that all permits would be processed through Passport. The permit would be renewed annually at $5 per car, up to two cars, and $15 per car for three or more. Additionally, that two guest passes would be available per property for up to one week, and residents would be able to transfer guest permits via the Passport app.
Thank you very much. Just, I, any other questions?
Just a reminder, when, when would this go into, when would this be enforced?
January 1st.
Yeah, starting effective January 1st for the ordinance itself, but because it's a little bit of a change for our residents, we'll be working with the parking enforcement officers to have, to be, you know, relaxed in terms of any type of ticketing in those areas, in the residential parking program areas for several months.
Thank you.
Any other questions? My question would be about those residents who currently are part of the program. I know you've reached out to them. Can you talk a little bit about how much communication has happened and where it's going?
Certainly. So I do want to thank the kind of Parking Committee that has been led by Public Works Director Mike Green, as well as Karen. We've had, everyone who's, a number of folks touched, like, throughout the, throughout the agency, excuse me, the administration, including those from Parking Enforcement, those who are like the parking meter technicians, everybody who touches parking, really got together and has been focusing on this for almost, almost a year now. In terms of those residents who already have residential parking, we're talking about the ones who don't have, who have black signs on their street that say resident parking only. So it's not everybody. It's not people who go in and get a certain, like, meter pass, meter permit on Passport. This is literally just the folks who have black signs on their streets that say residential parking. So we originally reached out to them through a survey to find out what their parking issues were, the kind of constraints that they were having, the troubles that they were having. We asked them about their household size, the number of cars that they have, whether they have on-street parking, off-street parking. So we were just gathering information. That was, I don't remember the exact timing, maybe six months ago. It was, it was a little bit ago. From there, we gathered that information and started thinking through what changes we wanted to make. We reached out to other communities who have compact grid like ours, where there's lots of different uses happening in a very dense place, and started to recommend some changes. Since then, we will be sending out a postcard directly to those homeowners, because we're not going to be putting this on social media, because this is not for everybody. It's really those who live in those streets. So we'll be doing postcard directly to them with a QR code so that they can go on to Passport with directions, and there's specific, like, communication for them at that QR code and the website.
Great.
So.
Thank you.
We've been doing a lot of outreach to them, and hopefully, we reached a lot of people, and I'm sure there will be some that we have missed, but that's why we're going to have lax enforcement on those streets for several months.
Very good. Thank you very much for that. Any, any more questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of the approval of ordinance number 1175 of 2025, the residential parking program, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. And I also want to echo a thanks to the Transportation Committee, to our Public Works Department. A lot of work went into this, a lot of thought, so, great. Moving on now to properties and public works. Councilmember Joy Washington, Ms. Washington.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also have no liaison announcements tonight. My first order of business is the Resolution Number 2025-41, which is the application to local share account grant for Boral Tennis Court rehabilitation and stormwater improvements. Yeah, it's just improving the, the Boral Field areas that I just listed, and I set this up in the form of a motion.
Thank you. Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the matter?
Just, it's a grand program. As Councilperson Washington mentioned, it's to resurface both courts. It is to help with some stormwater piping and additional inlets to improve, well, help the flooding that's happening over there.
Yes.
And the third is safety lighting, and, but will also be there so that they can use the courts in the evening time, particularly during the fall when it's, gets dark early.
Right. All right, thank you very much.
There's no match required.
That's good to know. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving Resolution, excuse me, all those in favor of approving Resolution 2025-41, application to local share account grant for Boral Tennis Court rehabilitation and stormwater improvements, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. My next item of business will be the license agreement for Safe Harbor AA Group. This group uses our second-floor conference room for their meetings, and I believe this is for a license agreement where they, they will be using it on the weekends.
Very good.
Yep, so I'll put this up in the form of a motion.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the license agreement for Safe Harbor AA Group, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Are there any questions for Councilmember Washington? Hearing none. We'll move on now to Council Vice President Elizabeth Romaine, Finance and Media Business Authority. Vice President Romaine.
Thank you, President Pecoff. Just to note that the holidays are coming up, and media is full of events all December long, November and December long. So make sure to follow, visit Media P A on social media, or check out the website. There is something going on, you know, every weekend, lots of Wednesdays and so on. It's a really great time of year to be going to our businesses in downtown areas to dine, and shop, and play. My first item today is presenting the preliminary 2026 general capital liquid funds and recreation budgets. Before I put this in a motion, I just want to highlight a couple of things in the preliminary budget. We did discuss this at workshop, but I do, again, want to give some highlights. You know, the headline is, is that this budget is complete, it is balanced across all funds. The total general fund operating budget comes in at approximately $12 million, and notably, there are no real estate taxes proposed for 2026. That said, I'm sorry, what did I say? There are no real estate tax increases proposed for 2026. That said, I do want to note that while we've been able to hold steady this year, future increases may be necessary, so I just want to keep that in mind. The rising costs and certain declining revenues that continue to put our budget in, you know, put pressures on our budget. In particular, we're projecting lower earned income tax revenues next year due to Upper Darby Township's anticipated implementation of its own EIT beginning in January 2026. Turning to personnel costs, salary increases are budgeted at 3.5% for police, 3% for Public Works, and 3.25% for most other non-union borough employees. We've also incorporated the pay equity recommendations from earlier this year for non-union personnel with a total financial impact of about $44,000. For the fire company, we're proposing an increase of $64,000, which will help, help cover cost of living adjustments, additional part-time staffing, and a recassy of the ambulance. The borough's pension obligations also increased slightly primarily due to salary adjustments and actuarial, actuarial, excuse me, updates. The total minimum municipal obligation is projected at $758,000, which is up about $17,000 from last year, based on valuation reports. We're proposing a $500,000 transfer to the Capital Reserve Fund to help support a $4 million capital budget. Key priorities for 2026 include two stormwater improvement projects on Ridge Avenue, continued work on the Third Street Bridge, and facility maintenance initiatives. So this is our preliminary budget. If you have any changes or any notes, you know, you know, we really are down to the wire now, so we're adopting the preliminary budget, and next month, I'll be proposing the final budget. But in summary, the 2026 budget is balanced, forward-looking, and responsive to the borough's operational needs and community priorities, positioning us for another stable year while we continue to plan carefully for the future. So I would like to make a motion to adopt the preliminary 2026 general capital liquid funds and recreation budget.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? I'd just like to thank all of our incredible staff and our incredible Finance Committee. Must have been a lot of fun to put that together, but thank you again for holding our residents and the ability to not raise taxes, and, you know, it's a wonderful thing. All those in favor of adopting the preliminary 2026 general capital liquid fuels and recreation budgets, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. The motion carries unanimously.
Next item on my agenda is the annual renewal for ClearGov. This is the service that we're able to actually put our budget online and have a lot of transparency to the way that we project our budget, spend money, et cetera. So I'm making the form of a motion that we renew the ClearGov in the amount of $5,500 for 2026, $6,695 for 2027, and $6,895.85 for 2028.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the matter? I'm glad they rounded it to the nearest five cents, now that we're no longer making pennies. All those in favor of the annual renewal for ClearGov in the amount of $5,500 for 2026, $6,695 for 2027, and $6,895.85 for 2028, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion has passed unanimously.
Finally, I'd like to propose that we ratify the payment of bills for October for the general fund in the amount of $2,37,203.71. For the liquid fuels fund, $109,747.58. For the recreation fund, $5,298.80. For the capital fund, $204,855.63. For a total amount of $2,357,105.72. I make that in the form of a motion.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of ratifying the payment of bills for October in the amounts that Vice President Romaine outlined, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Vice President Romaine? Hearing none. We'll move on to my report, and I'll hand this over. It'll be very short. I have one liaison announcement, and that involves an item that will come up later in the agenda. Planning Commission met earlier this month and asked us not to oppose a proposal for a property at 500 North Olive. Councilmember Malkun will go into more detail, or I can share at that time. Just to note that the next zoning hearing board meeting would normally happen next Thursday. It's not going to. It's been rescheduled to Wednesday, December 3rd. There are other meeting changes coming up, so make sure that you're checking the website, particularly for November and December meetings that are happening. With the holidays both falling on Thursdays this year, we've had to do some shuffling, and those meetings have all been advertised correctly, but it will be a little different. So, thank you. And that concludes my report.
Any questions for President Pecoff?
Okay. Thank you. I told you it was a big one. Moving on now to Public Safety, Recreation, and our Civil Service Commission, Councilmember Kevin Boyer. Mr. Boyer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few announcements from REC. Upcoming events in December, on Saturday, December 13th, is the annual Coco with Clauses. So Santa and his helpers and Mrs. Claus should be there and available for pictures, and there'll be Coco and all kinds of good stuff like that. So that is Saturday morning on December 13th. It's usually, what, 9/11? Tendal, Tendal.
You should know.
I should. But that's, yes. Tend is usually around when it starts, and we usually go, the Coco's gone, but Tend is a good start time. And then a week later, the, this is annual winter solstice event, that will be at the Parlor. REC does a great job presenting that, so that will be Saturday evening, roughly around 5:00, in the, in the Parlor. So that's the week after. So those are the REC announcements. I do have a few items of business, but apparently, I looked at my email, it looks like maybe we're going to table the first item. So we won't be renewing the contract with Brandywine. We will hold off on that until December, until we get some more information about that. But item number three, I do ask that we ratify the mass gathering permit for the Media Halloween Parade, which happened back on October 25th, 2025, and I make that in the form of a motion.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the matter? Wonderful time, as always. All those in favor of ratifying the mass gathering permit for the Media Halloween Parade to be held October 25th of 2025, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. I should say, any opposed, say boo. Motion carries unanimously.
No, you shouldn't.
No, I shouldn't.
(laughter)
Sorry, I try sometimes.
You're such a dad.
I know, I know. Yes.
The next mass gathering, I ask that we approve the mass gathering permit for the Lunar New Year Lion Dance to be held on Saturday, February 21st, 2026, from noon until 5:00 PM. That's down on State Street, and we discussed this in Public Safety, and everybody's okay with it. So I ask we approve the mass gathering permit for the Lunar New Year Lion Dance.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the matter? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the mass gathering permit application for the Lunar New Year Lion Dance to be held on Saturday, February 21st, 2026, from noon to 5:00 PM, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. And my final item of business, business is to authorize council to submit a letter of intent to the Department of Community and Economic Development, otherwise known as DCED, requesting a peer consult to help explore a multi-municipal EMS authority. I make that in the form of a motion.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the matter? I just like to note that this is simply opening lines of communication. Is that correct, Ms. Forman, if I may?
Yeah, this is a continuation of the intergovernmental group between about six municipalities that are nearby us to consider how to keep advanced life support running smoothly in our towns. And so this will be reaching out to DCED to help us with a study, to think through what an authority, an EMS authority would look like in our, in our areas.
Very good. Thank you very much. All those in favor of authorizing the submission of a letter of intent to the Department of Community and Economic Development requesting a peer consultant to help explore a multi-municipal EMS authority, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilmember Boyer? Hearing none. We will move on now to Personnel, Environmental Advisory Council, and Library. Councilmember Lisa Gelman, Ms. Gelman.
Thank you, President Pecroft. I have a couple liaison announcements for the library. They are running a couple different fundraisers for this year. There is a couple different holiday raffles that have a lot of really amazing things in them, including $100 gift cards to Trader Joe's, and a couple tickets to Media Theater, and so forth. So please stop by. They're $5 for one ticket, $20 for five tickets. They are also having a large Country Lion Dance festivity tomorrow night here in the Media Community Center. Tickets are $20, and I think they might be sold out. So I hear there's a waitlist. So it's BYO. They also have things there to buy. So if you can, support the library. Thank you. Those are my liaison announcements. I am pleased to finally bring to legislative meeting the ordinance number 1176 of 2025 Amendment to the Plastic Bag Ordinance to Ban Polystyrene. I bring that in the form of a motion.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
I would just like to say that I'm incredibly proud that we are passing this, and I look forward to future conversations around black plastic.
Thank you.
I'm looking forward to that as well.
I echo the thoughts on polystyrene, and appreciate all of the understanding that has gone into this process. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving ordinance number 1176 of 2025, the Amendment to the Plastic Bag Ordinance to Ban Polystyrene, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Fantastic. Thank you. My third and final item for business is the promotion of John Waskovich from Acting Finance Director to Finance Director effective January 1st, 2026. I bring that in the form of a motion.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Ms. Forman?
Just that we wholeheartedly support and this recommendation for a promotion. John is, has come to our team over, over a year ago, has been doing an amazing job, and I think he will be an excellent finance director.
Thank you. It certainly seems the transition has gone as well as anyone could have hoped. Yes.
Yeah. As just a member of the Finance Committee, I'm extremely pleased that he's on board. So thank you for bringing him along, and we are, I'm excited, so, okay. Let's do it.
All those in favor of promoting John Waskovich from Acting Finance Director to Finance Director effective January 1st, 2026, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Great. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilmember Gelman? Hearing none, we will now move on to Shade Tree Commission and Zoning Hearing Board. Councilmember Jen Malkun. Ms. Malkun.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just an announcement that last weekend, Media Tree Tenders, in coordination with our Shade Tree and our Public Works, planted 53 trees in the borough. It happened over the course of several days, so we had some, a real amazing group of dedicated volunteers who pulled up their shirt sleeves and got their hands dirty and planted trees. 30 of those 53 trees were planted in the borough's right-of-way. So the rest of them, the remainder of them, were planted on private property. That concludes my announcements. I'll move on to zoning hearing board application for 500 North Olive Street. As Council President Pecroft mentioned earlier, Planning Commission recommended that we do not oppose this application. The application is for relief of reducing the side yard setback. And also, there is a unique condition for the existing dwelling being on a corner lot. And are there any other specifics about this application?
No, I think that that covers it. The one thing that I think is of note is that the property owner went and spoke to neighbors, had the opportunity to really build a structure that would have significantly caused problems with the view and sunlight for the neighbor property, and did what we really encourage everyone to do, which is to make sure that they're balancing the needs of their neighbors with their own, their own situation. So that, that's pretty much, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. There's, there's really no action to be taken on that. So that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Councilmember Malkun? Hearing none.
I was just going to say-
Oh, no, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
No, it's fine.